At eight nine AM, I'll call to the McHenry County Board Committee of the Home Meeting of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and Mr. Kearns will lead us into the next day.
Let's leave this through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please call on?
Pamela Altov. Carolyn Campbell.
Here.
Joseph Gotamaller.
Here.
Terry Grino.
Here.
Eric Hendricks. Carl Kaminsky.
Present.
Jim Kearns.
Here.
Matthew Uncle.
Here.
Teresa Mashes. Lou Ness.
Here.
John Reiner.
Here.
Brian Sager. Michael Shorten.
Here.
Michael Sala.
Present.
Larry Smith.
Here.
Gloria Van Hoff. Tracy Von Bergen.
Here.
Kelly Wagner.
Here.
Chairman Beeler.
Here.
In an accord, we'll proceed. Good morning. I've got a handful of items to share with the board before we begin reviewing the agenda for next Tuesday's meeting. Over the past week, I've represented the county board at a number of important events. Yesterday morning, I attended a joint meeting of the Chicago Metropolitan Planning Agency and the governor-appointed Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Committee to receive and approve the official plan of action for regional transit report. The report details bold ideas and concepts regarding how the Regional Transportation Authority can avoid the anticipated $730 million shortfall next year. Discussion focused on envisioning the mass transit system we want, how to pay for it, and crafting a system of governance that's best suited for the area's needs. And yesterday evening, I had the honor of making the opening remarks at the Sixth Annual McHenry County Water Forum. The annual event at McHenry County College, which is put on by our Water Resources Division and the Environmental Defenders of McHenry County, offers an interesting and informative program aimed at educating residents, businesses, and government about the importance of ensuring that McHenry County's water supply remains sustainable and safe for future generations. Thank you to our Water Resources Specialists, Scott Teckendall, the Defenders, MCC, and all the sponsors who helped make the forum possible for, again, delivering a great presentation. Last Thursday, September seventh, I had the privilege of attending a tourism event hosted by Naturally McHenry County at the newly opened and renovated old Courthouse Center on Woodstock Square. The guest of honor was Daniel Thomas, the new Deputy Director of Enjoy Illinois and the Illinois Office of Tourism. The event was his latest stop in a statewide tourism listening tour, and he came away learning a lot about McHenry County's wonderful places and wide open spaces. The second and final installment of property taxes were due on Tuesday, and I'd like to take a moment to thank McHenry County Treasurer Donna Kurtz for making the process of paying even more convenient and hassle-free, from waiving the fees to pay online or by phone via electronic check to holding Saturday hours to give people paying in person even more flexibility. Also, thank you to Donna and our communications staff for teaming up to craft news releases, social media posts, and video to ensure that the public knew about these new measures. Finally, this morning, as you know, we've been receiving a lot of public comment regarding rodeo for McHenry County. County Administration and I have been in contact with our Planning and Development Department, the Sheriff's Office, and the State's Attorney's Office as we work to improve our zoning requirements under the UDO for rodeos and similar events. We've heard from everybody, including owners of said venues, and I look forward to seeking proposed updates to the UDO early next year. And speaking of zoning, with my remarks concluded, the next item on the agenda will be zoning training from County Board for the County Board from State's Attorney Civil Chief Norm Vinton and Joe Gotamaller, County Board Vice Chairman and Chairman of the Planning, Environment, and Development Committee. One last reminder, as Mr. Vinton and Gotamaller go forward, we do have need for executive session this morning to discuss ongoing or pending litigation, as well as the review of previous executive session events. Do any members have comments this morning? Ms. Grino?
I'd like to commend and bring to attention the accreditation for our Coroner's Office and what our coroner has done. Mike has done a great job of professionalizing the systems and processes and getting to a level that it's never been at before. Also, some very clever ways of handling his capital expenditures to not impact general fund. I appreciate that. Secondly, and on a sadder note, I want to commend our State's Attorney Patrick Cunnealy for his handling of the H. A. Freund case. I cannot imagine the traumatic impact of having to go through the details of that, but holding people accountable for the death of that young boy and making sure that this is something that doesn't happen again and that the people who are responsible are held responsible. And I want to thank him for his effort, and not only from his legal professionalism, but from his emotional expenditure in dealing with this.
I would like to take a moment to acknowledge staff who carefully and diligently prepare budgets for the next budget cycle. This is my first time through the budget cycle, and they've been exceptionally helpful in educating me about the challenges of putting together a budget and the challenges of where the revenue, where will we get the revenue to help those departments do their best work? So I'm more excited about the budget process than I thought I was. And I want to thank Chairperson Sala for giving me inordinate hours to explain the process to me over and as a new member. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, and thank you for bringing up the subject of the rodeo situation that we're dealing with. We've been working on it. I was going to ask Peter and/or Adam to give us a few more specifics as to how we're moving forward with that, if that's okay? Appreciate it. I just want the other county board members have been asking, make sure we all get on the same page.
Sure.
That's all.
Sure. So this has been discussed a couple times at PED, and it's really rendered kind of three primary areas of focus that the amendments would concentrate on. So a couple of the items that have been discussed have been related to liquor and liquor licensing specifically, and then safety, crowd control, and this is broad, but you're talking about attendees, participants, animal, animal welfare. Those are the big areas and how we address those. We haven't really gotten into the details yet, but that's the areas of focus. Yep, thank you. Ms. Van Hoff?
Good morning, everyone. I just had the pleasure, the last evening, of attending the Farm Bureau and got there a little late for the snacks that they were serving, but was able to sit in on their meeting and listen to some of the great things that the members had to say and introduce myself. I did run into three members of the board there, two on the way out, and then Eric came in later, so it was a really good evening. I was happy to be there.
Ms. Campbell?
Okay, I don't want to be, Dave, I don't know if you're going to be mentioning anything about that, but is this a good time for me to say? I'm so, oh, okay, I got you. So I just wanted to mention in the corner here are some maps here from the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan update. These are the communities that participated, and I just, I think we'll probably maybe have these again on Tuesday if people want to take a closer look. But the colored sections are the different, like on the left are the townships. You've got four townships that participated, as well as the McHenry Fire Protection District in green, and on the right, mapping are all the communities that participated. And this is important because this is a five-year plan, and these communities that have participated in the update have also are now eligible for federal funding for mitigation purposes, natural hazard mitigation purposes. And we've had some communities understand the consequences of not being a part of that plan when they've had some serious flooding issues and serious issues related to natural hazards. So kudos to our, Dave Christensen and his team for reaching out to all of these communities and making sure that they were participating and all that participated to make it such a great plan. So, but thank you for bringing those in. Thank you.
See no further member comment. We'll move on to public comments. Christian Schmidt, just a reminder, you have three minutes to address the board, at which time the light will come on. I would ask you to summarize your comments if you have it already.
Okay. I come to you as the Director of the Social Emotional Learning for Crystal Lake District Forty-Seven, as a social worker who has been in this county for over 22 years, and as a member of the Board of Directors of NAMI, as well as a parent who has had to navigate the difficult world of accessing mental health supports and substance use services in McHenry County. My diverse experiences, both professionally and personally, lend itself to a unique perspective on the gaps our county has with the availability and accessibility of resources for those in need in addition to the barriers we have due to antiquated protocols and procedures when presented with mental health and substance use issues. Mental health crisis is something we all know is happening nationally. It's increased over the last decade, and it's exponentially increased in the years since COVID. In the 2023 Community Health Needs Assessment from Northwestern, forty percent of survey respondents reported nervousness, anxiety, on edge, and other similar symptomatology, and that has doubled since the 2020 survey. The survey does not take into account the needs of adolescents and children. Significant gaps in crisis response exist as we educators are often left trying to figure out how to meet these needs. This leaves us in a predicament because it's difficult to support students and families when often we are told that the crisis is too significant for agencies to assist with. Although those numbers have been tracked as far as overdoses and other similar numbers, they do not take into account things like overdoses for people who were thankfully resuscitated. Suicide and self-harm rates in McHenry County are eighty-one point eight per one hundred thousand, which is nearly eight times higher than the state and national averages, according to that recent Community Health Needs Assessment. I know in District Forty-Seven, we conduct suicide screeners, which is a sign of suicide for seventh and eighth graders, and on average, we have thirteen percent of students who report self-harm, suicidal ideation, and/or suicidal attempts. Detox centers are no longer the norm. Inpatient medical stabilization is no longer the norm. Insurance restrictions contradict what research shows us is needed to allow for medication management, mental health stabilization, as well as substance use recovery. I can appreciate that many communities do not have a 708 board. I also have had the distinct pleasure of working closely and collaboratively with them for many years to address the mental health needs in schools. I fully recognize the amazing things the Mental Health Board has been able to accomplish with the funds that they've been provided over the years. However, the needs have grown exponentially, and the funding allocations have not. I am here to ask that the funding allocation be increased to meet the needs of our community.
Next, we'll move on to presentations, which we have today, presented by Norm Vinton, Chief Civil Division of the State's Attorney's Office, and Joe Gotamaller, County Board Member and Vice Chair. There's the clicker. You go forward, back, forward, to the right, okay. Which side do you want to be on, Norm?
This, I'll be back here. I'll get out of the way of the screen.
Okay. All right. So for the new board members, really, our goal today was to make certain that when we're all done, you have tools that are available to you to make decisions about zoning ordinances. This is a cut-down version of what Janine Blake Dixon and David Melon did for the board four years ago, I think, something along that line. I tried to shorten it because I didn't think we wanted an hour, and I will do my best to keep this down to about 20 minutes. The only history we're going to tell you about is what you should know about zoning is, is that prior to this case that's behind me, which was in 1926, there was no zoning authorization in the United States, not just the county. McHenry County zoning ordinance was first passed in 1946, which meant that prior to 1946, you could build anything, anywhere, anytime. All you need to do is go buy the materials. Now, just so you understand how forward-thinking McHenry County is, LaSalle County's approved their first zoning ordinance, which is not far from here, that Starve Rock, in 2002. If you go up and down Route Thirty-nine and you see the turbines, those are in LaSalle County. They were put up in LaSalle County at the time when there was no zoning ordinance, so they didn't have to ask anybody. So at any rate, my goals for you today are pretty straightforward. The courts and the legislature has limited our authority time and time again, and that's again because prior to the 1920s, there was no zoning at all. What you used in order to make the decision is what we're going to talk about today. And again, our goal is to make certain that you have the ability with you to make good zoning decisions. This is not a lecture on what you have to approve or what you can't approve or what you can do. It's how to do it. If you're going to, if you're, if you want to vote on zoning, you should have the tools available to you to tell you what you should be looking at. And whether you want to vote on zoning or not, you're primarily responsible for these four items. MAP amendments, variations, conditional uses, and text amendments. I'm going to start with text amendments because we don't see them very often, but this board has seen them. This year, when we changed the zoning ordinance to deal with solar because the state of Illinois said we had to, those were text amendments. We changed our ordinance to say this is what you could do in certain places because the state legislature said we had to. MAP amendments are what you generally see every day. Somebody asks you, they are currently zoned one thing, agricultural, and they want to be zoned estate. When you look at your underlying ordinance, when you see that change, when you're given zoning, you're giving somebody permission to use their property in conformity with that portion of the ordinance. So if you were agriculture, you can build one home on 40 acres. If you're a state one or R-one, you can build one home on 10,000 square feet. That's R-one, not E-one. But so that's how you determine what things you're under. Variations, everybody has the right under the U.S. Constitution to petition their government for relief from whatever it is that the government's doing to them. Variations, you always have the right to ask as a petitioner. I can ask to vary the ordinance in any way I want. This board gets to decide whether to say yes or no to that, but that's what variations are about. They are telling you, I can't meet your ordinance for a specific reason, and I want you to give me a variation for that. Conditional use permits are in between. Conditional use permits are those things, and I'll use gravel pit mining as an example. If you were to look at our ordinance for gravel pit mining, you will see a whole list of things that a gravel pit would need to do. It's going to be in an ag zone because that's where virtually you have a big enough place to actually mine is at. But within that ag zone, we want to make certain they do things like monitor the water around them to see what's going on, that they have a reclamation plan afterwards so that when they leave, they don't just leave a hole and finish up. Those are the things that conditional use permits are designed for, to make certain that we cover those other items. The zoning board of appeals is your first line of recommendation. When you get a zoning petition in front of you, you're going to see that the zoning board made a recommendation in that. You should be asking yourself, the first question is, what was requested? You know, what am I looking at? Am I looking at a text amendment? Am I looking at a map amendment? Am I looking at a special use? What is it? And then, what did the zoning board do? Because the zoning board is the recommending body, but the zoning board is also conducting the hearings. They're listening to testimony, sworn testimony, from petitioners, from objectors, from neighbors. Sometimes neighbors are in support, sometimes neighbors are not, but the zoning board hears that testimony. You have transcripts of that testimony in your packets, and so you have the chance to see what was happening. But start with, what did the zoning board recommend us to do? That is usually the first step. Your responsibilities, ultimately, as a county board member, you get to decide a zoning, a text map, what's the ordinance itself say? I mean, you don't have unlimited authority. We just found that out when they told us in Springfield, they wanted us to change our ordinance in terms of conditional uses in solar and solar panels. But that's the first part. That's how the ordinance got there. You make the final decisions on variations. You make the final decisions on conditional use permits. You make the final decisions on map changes or corrections. You also do Plata subdivision. Just a side note, we've only had one in 12 years, but we used to have them literally every single meeting. Plata subdivision says, I'm going to break my property up in conformity with the zoning ordinance. So I'm going to, if I have E-one and I want to create a subdivision, it is more ministerial in terms of you're asking the board, the petitioner's asking you to approve their final Plata subdivision. It'll get signed by the chairman of zoning, it'll get signed by the, before it's recorded by our chairman, but that request is just, did you comply with the underlying zoning ordinance? Staff's going to tell you that in most instances, and it'll come to you with that recommendation. But the others fall into you. LaSalle and Sinclair. LaSalle factors, it's a LaSalle case. It was, LaSalle Bank sued Cook County in the 1950s. The Illinois Supreme Court got involved, and they said, when you decide a zoning case, these are your factors to look at, all right? Now, they're short versioned up there, and we're going to go through them again in a minute because the piece of paper that was, there's three pages that were handed out to you today that are on your desk. Those have the LaSalle and Sinclair factors on it. But when you're talking about zoning, what you're looking for are, you know, existing uses nearby, zoning nearby. So we try not to have, you know, an industrial park in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and LaSalle factors would be what you'd look at. Gee, what is the neighborhood here? What is here now? What has been here before? Is this a sudden change? The extent to which property values are diminished by the restrictions, so in other words, the person who's got a piece of property that's owned ag, who wants to zone it commercial, there's a big difference in the value in that per acre property. Are restrictions more sensible to keep it as ag, or should we make the change? The extent to which the destruction of property values promotes the health, safety, general welfare of the public. We can all think of plenty of uses that the petitioner would make an awful lot of money from that we wouldn't want to have next door to us. And, you know, I don't want to get into any of those particular right now, but that's one of the values that you get to look at. How does that impact them? You know, if my home is now depreciated in value because someone just put the landfill next to me, yeah, that impacts it. You have to be careful when you're doing specific values. Appraisers, and I'm not picking on the industry, I've seen many, many appraisal reports, what you and I think of as a change in value may or may not be supported by the data. So again, you go back and look at what the zoning board has heard for testimony. It'll be available to you. Make certain you base your opinion on sworn testimony, not on what you just happen to think might be the case. And again, these goals are to try to make certain that when we get to court, because we've made a decision, that the State's Attorney's Office can actually win the case. And if we make things based on our whim and not on our, you know, not on testimony, we're going to lose. Suitability of the subject property for the zone purposes, you know, will it work? As it currently is, will it continue to work with what it has? Has the world changed to make that no longer suitable? The length of time, and when you're looking at that, you often look at, how long has it been vacant? You know, there's a lot of land in this county that has not been used for what it's currently zoned for. Back prior to the last zoning change, if it was B-two, it meant it was zoned for a tavern. If you look at the old zoning ordinance, you will find that there were taverns all over McHenry County. They hadn't been used as taverns in probably 50 years, but that's how they used to classify B-two in McHenry County was the use of liquor. Communities' need for the proposed use, the care which the community has planned, the land use and development plan. That part is important because we're in the middle of doing, redoing a comprehensive plan. You say, well, how does these things work together? If we don't have a comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinance is illegal. The comprehensive plan is what is designed first to say, this is what you have here. This is then how you change it, and you're, under the state statute, the comprehensive plan has to come first. It has come first. We're currently in the process of redeveloping it, so we project it out past 2030 and onto 2050. So we talked a little bit about what MAP amendments and text amendments are. I'm going to skip through some of these because I didn't use all of these, or I didn't, these weren't all my creation. But I do want you to understand about objections. When you see on our agenda, and it says how many votes are necessary to approve a project or to approve something, that's because for MAP and text amendments and for variations, the objectors can change the vote totals necessary for it to be approved. So for instance, if, let's say you have 20% of the neighbors object to a project, and by 20%, we're calculating how many square foot of the border or the boundary of that property is and saying, you've got 20% of that that files a formal objection. If it's a MAP amendment or a variation, that vote changes to a three-quarter vote, and it's a three-quarter vote no matter how many people are here. So you need 14 people, even if only 13 people show up as a petitioner, all right? Now, doesn't apply to conditional uses at all. Those objections don't change the vote totals on conditional uses. Again, you can thank the state statute for that. That's just the way it is. So if a conditional use is being proposed, there's no way to change the percentage of votes you need. But as I'm sure this, you've all sat there, finding four votes to object is a lot easier for an objector than finding nine to stop a petition. And variations are the same issue. Again, the variation question, actually, we'll go to the process a little bit. Zoning variations come before you a little different ways. If it is just a If it is just a straightforward zoning variation, my deck, it turns out, I, I, to, to build my deck property, I need it to be three foot closer to the sideline, to my, you know, my side lot than it's allowed. I'm asking for a simplified variation. I just want that rule to be, you know, released. We have a zoning hearing officer for that, not the full zoning board. We went to a zoning hearing officer because honestly, they were, it was simpler. When the zoning, when the rewrite of the zoning ordinance was done, one of the first things the staff started with was to ask, was to go back and look at all the variations we had for, say, the last 20 years. And they were asked at that point in time to do two questions. One, what was the request? And two, did we have multiples of that request? Did we ever say no to it? And so the idea was to create an ordinance that, in a way, that they didn't have to come through all this process. If we were always going to say yes, the, change the ordinance. Okay? I mean, it, it, it shouldn't be, you shouldn't drag people through a $2,000 to $5,000 process when we're going to say yes anyway. And, and because of that, if you look in the zoning ordinance, you will find that they have some traditional subdivision lots now, where we, and, and what, one of the things they found was is that garages were always requested on the front property line, you know, all along the Fox River. They were always approved. Guys, let's change the ordinance so garages can be in the front on traditional zoning lots. Those zoning lots that were done prior to 1946, you will find that there's, and, and anybody that has driven up and down the Fox River knows that, there's an awful lot of subdivisions that run 50-foot wide lots. We don't allow 50-foot wide lots today. And the reason we don't allow them today is because they don't fit with a septic system. They don't fit, they just don't have enough room to do what we would want to be done today. Nevertheless, there's thousands of people in McHenry County that live on 50-foot wide lots, and they were coming in repeatedly to ask for variations because their deck wouldn't fit. Or their, you know, whatever, their garage was on the wrong side of the house or for whatever reason. And yet, why wouldn't you let them continue to live in their house and continue to fix up their house and take care of it? So those are, those are the, those are the simplified variations. If you, if you can't fit it in and administration can't do it, then you go through a hearing officer. The other kind of variations you'll see is when somebody's combined that variation request with other things. So I'm going to do a zoning change and a variation at the same time. There's nothing wrong with asking for it, but it means that the zoning board will make your recommendations, not a hearing officer. So what evidence do you get to consider? You're going to have a packet, and you have a packet, I'm sure by now, after nine months, you've all seen zoning packet. It's probably overwhelming the first few times you see it. I know it is, because there's a lot of things that you don't know what even the language means. All right? But you do have in front of you a transcript of those hearings. You have, and particularly, you usually have the voting hearing in those transcripts, so you can hear what the zoning board was debating and thinking about when they made the decision. If you want to go deeper, you can hear about what objectors had to say and whatever. But, but from a thumbnail standpoint, the first thing is, what was the, what did they ask for? Are you on a text amendment? Are you on a variation? Are you on a conditional use? What is the request? Second, what did the zoning board recommend? And how did they recommend it? 706152 is a positive recommendation to have it approved. 43 is no recommendation at all. It's all up to us. It's, it's, it's neutral. It's not a, it's not in opposition. It's not in favor of anything that's, that 43 or 34 means the zoning board doesn't count. We have to make the decision. And so that's why you want to start there. The second thing that I personally always look at is, what do the neighbors do? What do the towns do? If you're with, if you're a town within a mile and a half of this piece of property, you have the right to file a formal objection if it's zoning or variation. You can weigh in on a conditional use, but it's not, it doesn't change the vote total. So what did those neighbors do? Third thing you get to look at, if you, if it's, if it's, you're, you're concerned about it, you have the right to go look at the property. I mean, no. If it's 70 and there's no objections, I'm probably not going to look at the property. But it's not unusual to go on Athena and look to see what's around it. What's there? If you haven't been on Athena, you should go on the county's Athena system and look up any, any property that you're about to deal with. The next thing that, that, besides that evidence that you're going to consider, you ought to take a good look at, when we, when we are using conditional use permits, when we're talking about those, you have the right as a board to make changes to those conditions. There are some limits, and we'll talk about those in the executive session later on. But there are limits to what you can change. But in most instances, you have the right to bring forward a change if you think that the conditional use. We've talked a lot about it in terms of time, but it, there's other reasons why you might want to have a, a, a different restriction on a conditional use. Somebody decides to put in a, an outdoor theater, and we want to decide what time they're going to stop blasting music over the boundaries. Those are the kind of conditional uses that would come forward. You know, and those are the kind of things that, that you get a chance to amend. And that brings us to the end of that slideshow, but it also brings you to the papers that's in front of you. Zoning map and text amendments. They're short standards, they're short variation. These are what's actually in our county ordinance. So when you're looking at the, at the Sinclair and the LaSalle factors, if you look at the one that says zoning map and text amendments approval standards, 1A through H, that's exactly what those cases say. In fact, if you pulled the case law and looked at it, you'd find that it is, yeah, we don't, sorry. You, you would, you would literally find those sentences in the case. And, and you are always safe talking about those issues. You and I might disagree on whether a piece of property is compatible with the neighbors, but as long as we are centered on the compatibility with the neighbors, we are safe to talk about it. We're not going to have a problem afterwards because of a decision that we base on those kind of standards. All right? On the other hand, and many of you have heard me say this before, but I'm saying it again. Many, many years ago, when I was a petitioner for a client, a zoning board member actually made this statement, and they approved it, so I was quite happy. But this is a farmer I've known for years. I like him. He should be able to do anything he wants on his property. That is not a zoning standard. And it might, it, it might be the reason you decide to do something, but please do not make that your standard. And I mean, like I say, it, it, it was one of those that, that even I as a petitioner was cringing going, oh, if this goes up, I lose. You can't do it. But those are the conditions that you need to look at. I, you know, I'd be happy to talk to you about any one of these conditions. I can tell you that all of these conditions and all of these, these standards that we look at have been time-tested in the last 100 years. And that's the reason why the county board in the past and why we're suggesting today is focus your arguments on these items. I, again, I'm not telling you which way you've, you know, how you want to focus it. That's your decision, and that's why you're here. But if you stay with those items and these standards, you're making arguments that the courts have repeatedly said, those are your decisions to make. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Norm's here to back me up and say anything that I screwed up. If you've got something, right ahead, Norm.
Thank you. I, I have four things. First of all, I think the county's lucky in that Joe Gattamoller is here and he's on this board because I don't think there's anybody in the county that has more experience with zoning and petitions than Joe. And so he's a fantastic resource. Second thing is, public comments that you hear regarding zoning petitions really should not be part of your consideration. The consideration is that sworn testimony and the transcripts from that ZBA hearing. So you really, the public comments can sometimes be very emotionally pulling, but from a legal standpoint, they don't have any weight. When you are considering zoning, these LaSalle factors are your bible. And if you're going to weigh in and say why you're voting yes or why you're voting no, you should be prepared and you should articulate in those LaSalle factors which way you're weighing in on it. Using Joe's example of a gravel pit, you can't just say, well, I don't like gravel pits. I'm not approving any gravel pits. I just, I think we have enough gravel pits. That won't work. You've got to articulate. And about, maybe three months ago, the board had a petition, I think it was a conditional use petition for, like a housing or something like that. And members articulated beautifully their reasons why they were voting for and against. And that's exactly what we look for. Joe mentioned Athena, and I don't know if that's the same as on the treasurer's website.
It's the, it's the county's GIS.
Okay. Well, if you go on the treasurer's website and you have a PIN number, your own property, if you plug in your PIN number, on the very side, there is a whole section there of all these things that'll give you everything from elevations to drainage to watersheds and GIS information. And it is a wealth. You can pull it up. It'll have aerials. It is, it's fantastic to look at. Those are the four things that I had.
Any questions? Have we got you all asleep? Good.
Yes, I have a question. If, if sworn testimony is found to be untrue, what can the objectors do about that?
Well, first off, they can testify the, they can, at the hearing, they can testify to it. You know, if, if somebody is at the zoning board hearing, it's not uncommon to have, you know, one person say it's A and the other person say it's B. That's why the zoning board's there, to take that testimony to decide who's telling the truth to them and who is, you know, it's, it, the zoning board officers, the zoning board members are, it's, it's, the, the legal term is quasi-judicial. They act like a judge to make that determination. Now, could they be wrong? Certainly. There are, you know, we've had arguments many times where people disagree. But the, the decision, the testimony that you're supposed to base your, your stuff on is not what comes from this podium, but as Norm was saying, it comes from the sworn testimony. When people can lobby you, people can argue for things. And it's an argument, and they're allowed to make that argument. But that, it's not testimony. It is the difference. And the testimony itself, you know, you, you get to use your common experiences to whether something's true or not. If somebody goes out and says it's, you know, snowing or it's not snowing, you can go out and see that. And that's one of the reasons why you're still allowed to go look at property if you, if you, you know, if that issue's available to you. But, but you have to base it on, you know, when it, when it comes, when, when they're stuck in a courtroom, they're stuck on what the testimony was at the hearing. That you based, that taking that oath and saying that you're going to tell the truth is something that's important. And like I say, arguing in front of a board, understand, they're allowed to, every, the, the members of our public are absolutely allowed to give us their opinion and argue in favor of this or against that or whatever the case might be. But that doesn't, it's not testimony. It's just, that's just the way it is. It is the reason why this board for years has had that public comment session after the zoning board, to try to make certain that that doesn't get confused.
So it would be to the objectors' best interests to be present and to have their facts there.
They have the right to testify at that hearing, and they get to tell the finder a fact. This is why we think the petition's wrong, or right, as the case might be.
And they can hire their own attorney to come in and represent them. And you will see that pools of objectors hire one attorney to come in and argue.
So the case should be made there, not here.
Well, again, they can give opinions here. But, but it's an opinion. And, you know, we all have one, so.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Norm.
Yep, thank you. With that, we'll move on to new business. Do any board members have agenda items they'd like to remove for discussion? Seeing none? This is wonderful. Oh, Mr. Reiner, gee. Mr. Reiner.
I'd like to pull everyone.
Denied.
Uh, yeah, 710. Uh, 710 on the.
710?
Yep.
Which, which one is it?
What is 710?
Uh, routine consent agenda. Oh, that's the resolution authorizing emergency appropriation, ARPA funds, lease space for COVID-related expenses. I am on Tuesdays, I'm sorry. I'm not on today's.
What's the, what's the agenda number?
My apologies. You know what? I pulled out, I don't have the, the, the number. It is the, the COVID space-related expenses, the store department of health's COVID-related.
16B, 16B 29.
Thank you. I was on the, I was on the finance page.
Yeah, I'm glad you looked. Emergency appropriation interest accrued from ARPA? Lease space, okay.
That's correct, 16B 29.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Ron Burgin?
14A, only to abstain from the reappointment of the Hebron Drainage District Commissioner.
Okay, well, note that for Tuesday. Ms. Wagner?
I just, I have to abstain from 16B 51 on Tuesday.
Okay. Seeing no others, Mr. Reiner? 16B 29.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if there's anyone here that can help me understand the, it, it seems to me that, yeah. How much is this, these things, how much value do they have? I mean, is everything in that storage pertinent? I mean, do we need to save all of this? Where, where are we at with this?
The challenge we have is this is COVID-related PPE and other materials that were provided from the federal and state to the county for distribution in this COVID response. But we are obligated to maintain what we have not distributed. We can't get rid of it, even if it's expired. So we're challenged by having about 2,500 square feet pallets and pallets of undistributed PPE and other materials that we have to store. And has to be climate controlled just because of, you know, if it, you know, if you're not in climate control, then it deteriorates the materials. So this has been a, a challenge. We've been working internally, trying to work with our state and federal partners on coming up with a path. But as we sit today, we've received this material, and we have an obligation to keep it until we're told otherwise. And so that's why we're in this position.
Thanks, Scott. And which, which brought up two or, two or three other just quick questions, if, if I may. You, you had said that even if it's expired, you, you have to store it. Well, I, I agree, right? If you have to store it, you have to store it. But if it's expired, why would we spend it on $10 a square foot climate-controlled space, right? If it's not going to be used again, no matter what?
Yeah, and that's, I think, an excellent point. Our partners at DOT have stepped in and are putting some of that expired materials into cold storage. So we still have it. It's just not in this climate-controlled space.
Yeah, yeah, very good. And also, I noticed that on the, where I got caught up in the, in the finance minutes, it didn't have a count of the vote on everything else. It had, had how the finance department determined and, and, you know, to recommend or not. Is anybody from, from finance that could tell me how that discussion went?
Mr. Scala?
It went swell.
It didn't have a vote.
We approved it. I don't know why it doesn't have a vote. But yes, we did have a discussion. It was pulled to have a discussion. And it was a better understanding of exactly what was discussed here right now. But it was passed, I believe unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Scala. Mr. Shorten?
So just a, a clarifying question. It's, uh, per state and federal laws, we can't dispose of it. Is there any current path to get to a point that we can? Or is it something that legislation has to be passed, either at the state or federal level, in order to enable us to dispose of it?
Well, it's not legislation, it's regulation. And at this point in time, no, we've not been given any guidance. And we're not the only county in this situation. Anybody who's received that PPE or the COVID-related materials may be facing similar challenges. So, but we continue to work with, with our partners at the federal and state level, asking the questions, hoping we get some better guidance. And that's, that's where we sit today.
And, and all the PPE products that, that are taking up 2,500 square feet, they're, they're all expired, most of them?
No.
Okay.
That's, we have some that are, but the point being, even if it's expired, we're still obligated to hold on to it.
Right, understood.
And so, but.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kunkel?
Especially coming into winter, is there a possibility of doing some more distribution of these products to the same avenues as we did before? And I don't say make them hold the bag, but it would be available to their use now?
Yeah, that is correct. It's still available for distribution to our partners, whether it's the fire protection district, law enforcement, first responders. The health department does maintain, maintain that. So it is at the ready. The challenge we have with this space is it's, you know, it's about 20 miles from McHenry County. Our health department is a little concerned about that. In the event that we have a request, we're going to have to travel for it. I will assure you that we did our due diligence trying to find local space and unfortunately came up short. Uh, this was the only available space we had at the time, and we were under a time crunch because, as you may recall, we had this material stored in the former McHenry County Housing Authority building. That building ended up going under contract and was sold rather quickly. Uh, so we had to, in essence, scramble. I, I want to commend our, our partners in the purchasing department for finding, doing actually a thorough search, a multi-county search, and finding a space, we'll say, in the nick of time. But, but that, to your question, it is still at the ready. And in the event that we have another resurgence and it needs to be deployed, the health department is prepared to distribute it.
Okay, that wasn't my question, but that, that is around the question. I'm saying, can't we now distribute that coming into fall, winter, and possibly necessity? And then those people that we, or groups that we're distributing to, they would store their pertinent need or their amount or whatever themselves, not us?
If, my understanding is if they request it, we'll happily distribute it, but we need to respond to the request. And I can confer with the health department and follow up with you more specifically on how that process would work. But as it stands, we, we're the, we're the keeper of that material. If it's requested, we can deploy it, but until it's requested, we can't just send a pallet over.
Maybe a two-for-one sale or something, maybe move this stuff along. So, okay, thank you.
But we'll, we'll follow up with the health department and get a little more clarity on that.
Yeah, my, my question was similar. That was the first thing I thought about. There are a lot of people who, I mean, individuals, residents in the county. Is there anything that would prevent us from distributing it to residents? I, I imagine there's a certain amount that we would have to keep on hold in case there is a resurgence, but is there an amount that we can say, um, this is available for distribution? If you need COVID kits? I was just at a meeting a couple of nights ago, and someone had COVID kits that they were passing out that were unexpired. I'm not sure where they came from, but I took two. So is there something like that that we could do? What would prevent us from going out and announcing to the residents that we have COVID kits available for your use?
My understanding is it's not for individual, um, distribution. It's really for institutional distribution to our hospitals, to our nursing care facilities, to our first responders, fire departments. We're not able to distribute it individually to residents.
Did you want to, did you want to say something?
No, I'm just agreeing that, yeah, they're not for individuals. And when you say kits, to me, I'm thinking you might be talking about test kits. Yeah, so that's not what these.
Kits and also PPE, because this is under, I understand these, this is PPE equipment that you have there, but, um, the mask and, um, you know, like the N95 mask, they have a long life. Uh, so I, I imagine some of the expired materials that you have there are things that have been there from the beginning of, of the pandemic 2020. Because the shelf life on N95 mask is quite long, and, um, those are very valuable. So if there's a way that we could get those out there where they could be used, because going through this, we couldn't, it, it took us forever to find those. So just to have them sit there and expire seems like a bad use of resources.
Yeah, and I'd say that really speaks to the demand. I mean, is there a demand now for N95s today? And it doesn't appear to be one. But if there is a resurgence and there is a demand, we do have, uh, the materials ready to deploy, but we're not being asked for it.
Ms. Greeno?
I should have asked this in the finance committee, but, um, what percentage of what we received was actually distributed?
Uh, you know, I'll defer to the health department to see if they have a response to that.
I, I would have to check with staff in terms of, because some of those supplies that are on hand have been distributed, and then we've gotten more and ordered more. So.
Can you email that to us? Just curious.
So you want to, you want to know the total dis, amount of supplies that we've received over time?
Yes, what were we?
And then what was distributed?
Of what we're required to store, what was the total amount that we received and what was distributed?
Okay.
So that, just curious.
Mr. Reiner?
Thanks. I, I, I promise I won't spend too much time, but can, can you share with us what the inventory is? And then also, just a couple of follow-up question to that is, how much of that is going to be viable moving forward in the future? I mean, is, is some of this, like, it was fine for the first, first phase, but it's not even going to be used in the next ones? And then also, you know, you, Scott, you had said, well, we just can't give it, you know, they have to request it, but can't we ask some of the county hospitals if they have storage for it, rather than take it to Lake County? I mean, i- if they're 20 minutes outside of the county, we're spending an hour for every trip out there to go to and fro. Certainly, is there another option? So, but exactly, what is the inventory? How vital is it that we're storing it, right? Is it going to be used again, or will it be even used again? You know, so what, what was it in, have we checked with the local hospitals? Do they have storage for this?
Yeah, and, and I think the, an important point to note is we are the custodian of that material. So I think we have to make sure we have the inventory. But, uh, once again, I'll defer to the health department to provide the questions, or to provide, the information's been requested. But it's something that they're very careful, they being the health department staff and their logistics team, very careful to make sure that they have that inventory, they understand that inventory. So we have to be the custodian for it. We have to have that chain of custody.
So I'm happy to have, you know, put together a list. I don't have that inventory list in front of me right now. I just, I was listening from my office and ran down. So if you'd like to understand what's in there, but as Scott said, there's masks, there's gloves, there's, you know, those general PPE supplies that we are required to have on hand, but we can compile that list and share that with the board afterwards. I'm happy to do that.
Thanks, because I, I really don't want to tell you your job. It's not our place. I understand that. But you, you're saying masks and gloves and, and other things. That doesn't sound to me that like it's got to be climatically controlled either.
That, that's not dictated by us. That's dictated by the state.
Mm-hmm, right.
Or the manufacturer, how it has to be stored in order to protect that should you need it in the future.
Okay, so you, you, you could be able to verify that for us, that you've, you know, what, what is, you know, has to be, you know?
Yeah, like the masks, they have a, you know, they're tested between certain temperatures. You have to keep them there, otherwise they potentially degrade and wouldn't work in the time of need.
Okay, great. So you'll get that back to us then before Tuesday, or?
Uh, yeah, I'll work with staff to get that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ness?
So I'm going to make an assumption that our staff understand the regulations and guidelines for the storage of this equipment and have done due diligence in making sure that we're not keeping things we don't need to keep, but that we're following the regulations on the stuff that we're required to keep. So I don't, I don't need an inventory of what you're keeping, because I trust that you're not squirreling away unnecessary, um, material. And, um, while I don't really understand, um, the conversation, I feel like we have a staff that's really qualified to do these kinds of things and not overburden the budget unnecessarily, because we are, you are conscious of expenses. And so I wanted to, I don't need the inventory. Thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
While I understand that the ARPA funds could be used for this, some of the interest and all that, and, and I'm okay with that, but, or actually, I'm not okay with that, with spending any funds on this. Is there, is there any option anywhere else in this county, including our sheriff's department jail, that's sitting a lot of it empty because of our immigration ICE contract cancellation? Could we lock it up somewhere over there? Is, have we explored that option?
Yes. Yes, we have. We looked deeply internally. Um, the long-term solution is a modification to the archives building, which is underway, or soon will be underway, to make improvements to accommodate this material. That's our long-term solution. But from August till, let's say, February or March, until that's complete, we had to have a home for it. And we did look internally. I did have conversations with the sheriff. They do have designs on, um, other spaces that, that would seemingly be available, but unfortunately for this duration, it just didn't work out. So the archives is the long-term solution, and once those modifications are complete, we'll move that over. What's before you, those are one-year contracts, and unfortunately, that's, uh, what was required to use, uh, use the space.
All right, so you do have a long-term solution then. And, and there's no one else that will give you less than a year, a year contract?
I, we looked. I, we looked for every different way, different types of spaces. This, uh, this was a bit of a challenge and a bit of a fire drill, and I think, actually, I commend all those who worked on it for, um, you know, pulling it off. It was, there's a lot of logistics that went into this in a very short period of time, and I think it was a good challenge that the county staff prevailed.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. When I read the support material, this is a done deal. This is already, the lease has been executed, the material's been moved. Really, our only decision, this is where the money would come from or not. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the, uh, to use the ARPA interest money seems very appropriate, and the rest of the decision, decision is mute, in my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Von Bergen?
I was just curious, um, if these, that the, the equipment needed to be requested for specific purposes, because it seems like gloves, masks are, you know, regularly used by, um, many of the organizations that have.
So this is, this is not a new storage issue. We've been doing this for three, four years now, since the onset of, of, of COVID. We, we had this stuff stored in private, private climate-controlled facility. In Johnsburg, in the county, all right? We, we sold, or we, we, with our ARPA money, we gave money to the housing authority. They moved into a new facility. We, our lease on the private facility in Johnsburg expired. We exercised the opportunity to put our PPE stock in the housing authority for free. And, because it's climate-controlled, and we kind of rolled the dice that we could get the facility done out at Heartland before they sold the facility, the housing authority's facility. It didn't work. They got, they got the price, and we got $350,000 back. So there's, there's $350,000 that we can put towards this, this, this amount also. I mean, there's, so it, we tried, you know, and, and it, it didn't, didn't work. The climate-controlled, you know, having that much climate-controlled space as a premium, at the end, it would have been easier to just leave it in Johnsburg, you know, but we didn't, we, we tried a different path and it just didn't quite work, and I apologize for that.
Saves a couple dollars having it at the housing authority, though.
We did, for a while, yeah. But now we're going to probably, you know, we may have a lease that's a little longer than we need when we get the facility done in Heartland. But we, we tried, you know, but it's, it's, it's all money we didn't have, and it's, it's all a burden that the federal government has placed on us to have this stuff.
And the point of the Johnsburg facility was a similar rate.
Okay, seeing no further comment. Pete, you got a report for us today?
Yeah, well, I was going to mention all that. Uh, just quickly, um, I had a meeting, I referenced this earlier, that we had a meeting with, with PACE a couple weeks ago. They brought out some wonderful materials. I just don't like throwing this stuff away, but if anybody's interested in about the services that PACE is providing in McHenry County, I'm going to leave these up here. I also wanted to thank, or congratulate David on the finishing of the natural hazard mitigation plan. That's no small task. And, and Carolyn, thank you for acknowledging that, that's a big deal. We did reference that in, in the written report that's on your desk and that we emailed out last night. Another item that's referenced in your report that's on your desk and was emailed out last night is, um, there is what we believe to be a, a meeting on the new passenger rail service to Rockford that's going to be a week from today in Huntley. We're trying to get absolute confirmation. It's on IDOT's website, but we've heard zero about it, other than when we had our meeting with IDOT and UP and Metro a week or so ago, they referenced it, but we're like, hey, how does anybody know about this? So we're trying to learn more about that, and we'll send you out separate information on that. But I want you to know, it's at the Park District, I think, four to seven a week from today in Huntley, and we're efforting to get more information out on that. I think that's all I've got. If there's any questions coming out of my written report, please let me know, and thank all the people that participated in putting that together.
Very good. Thank you, Pete. We do have need for executive session today. Uh, we'll need those. I'll, I'll leave pertinent personnel to stay. Everybody else must leave. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session in accordance with 5 ILCS 120/2C 11 pertaining to litigation. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Ms. Meshes seconds. Kathy, could you have a roll call vote, please?
Pamela Althoff. Carolyn Campbell.
Yes.
Joseph Gotamoller.
Yes.
Terry Greeno.
Yes.
Eric Kendricks. Carl Kaminski.
Yes.
James Kearns.
Yes.
Matthew Kunkel.
Yes.
Teresa Meshes.
Yes.
Lou Ness.
Yes.
John Reiner.
Yes.
Brian Sager. Michael Shorten. Michael Scala. Larry Smith. Gloria Van Hoff. Tracy Von Bergen. Kelly Wagner. Chairman Bueller. Chairman Bueller.